Okay, you all ready to go?
Bingo.
We'll call to order the special council meeting for the Tracy City Council on Monday, May, or May, August 20th, 2018.
President, Speaker, and the Attorney General. 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 President, Speaker, and the Attorney General.
Amen.
Do we have approval of the agenda as it is written?
Can we add item D, request for long-term recovery funding?
Okay.
Motion to approve it.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Anybody from the public that would like to talk about something that's not on our agenda? Hearing none, we will go to resolution 2018-42, offer the municipal liquor store inventory for sale. Do I have to read the whole thing?
Yes.
Okay. And to solicit them to advertise request for a proposal for the purchase of the municipal liquor store inventory and the lease of the municipal store building.
This is more of just a formality, just to do it as a resolution. Something that Matt had requested that we do.
I'll make that resolution. As written.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Discussion of raising properties?
Your chief come up and...
Kind of an update and then I guess a question of how you guys would like to see us proceed. At this time, we have eight properties that have been served notices. In order to have received a notice, it had some sort of structural damage where pieces of the wall were missing or had, you know, obviously collapsed onto the ground. None of these are due to Boeing structures or Boeing walls. These are all due to there's actually physically pieces missing. We sent them all a notice upon the original inspection, which was a notification that was put together with a report from myself, a report from Shane, the building inspector, and then transferred on to also more or less a cover letter from the city attorney. At this time of the eight, two of them have responded to us stating that they're securing... one is trying to secure the property and already has a contractor secured to remove and raise the property, raise the building. The second one contacted Shane last week in regards to permitting and stuff to tear down the other property. So, two of them, which are also on other lists as far as violations of maintenance code and stuff, will be going away here shortly. We will be following up with them, asking to make sure that it's completed within 30 days. We did get a response on a third property that wants to make repairs to something that's questionable, whether it's going to be repairable. We will be addressing that with them. The other five properties, we have had zero contact back from the people. Some of them were physically served letters by the police department. Some of them were registered letters that got returned, and one of them is still in limbo. It should have been returned to us by now, and I don't actually remember seeing the card saying that it was signed for yet. I'm assuming that something real soon should be coming back in the mail for us. With that being said, obviously as you did, I believe at the last council meeting with the property on 157 Third Street, you did a resolution ordering repairs or raising of the property within 30 days. Following the precedents you set at that meeting, I would assume that we would want these five properties to have a resolution drafted for the next council meeting instructing the same. And I guess that was probably a question. I'm assuming that is what you guys would like to do.
Are these buildings or homes?
Mainly homes. There's one building. One other building.
The one other building's multiple residential, right?
Correct.
Just unoccupied?
Unoccupied.
Previous.
So, they're homes, residential, not business?
They are residential homes. But again, I want to remind everyone that had they came back with us with a plan, or at least a thought of a plan, that would automatically buy 30 days. These are people that have failed to contact at all. So, I guess my question is to you, do you want me to send them another letter granting them 30 days even though we've had zero correspondence from them? Or do we want to just proceed ahead with the legal side of it, having Matt draft up the letters? And hopefully at that time they'll either come back and say, yep, we're going to make the repairs, or no, we're not.
Has Matt offered any opinion on that?
I...Matt, I've been working very closely with Matt on all this. His intentions were, we pretty much set a precedence with the building last time. If these people fail to get back to us between now and the next council meeting, that we should...I...the last correspondence I had with Matt was being gone today. I emailed him last night, he got back to me today. There wasn't enough time to get them set for tonight's council meeting. So, the thought process was technically we'd start drafting them towards the end of the week, and if we haven't heard anything from them by Monday, that we'd move forward in that direction.
Were the letters like by certified mail that we know they got them?
Yes. Or they chose not to get them.
And if you were served actually by the police chief?
About half of the eight were served and half of the eight were mailed.
I would think we'd want to go down that line. It's like there's always, if they come to you and say, "We're going to make repairs," or "We're going to do it."
Yeah, they still got home this week.
You know, it gives them the 30 days, more 30 days.
And some of them, if they do want to do it, I mean, this is saying in 30 days, they're supposed to make the repairs, but I think everybody in this room is all about if you come in and, you know, if you come in a week after you receive the letter and say, "This is my intention," and, you know, A, finding a contractor that's going to come in and do that in the next two weeks is going to be impossible. You know, hey, we can get somebody in there to shore it up, but, you know, the contractor that, you know, the contractor I talked to said, "This is a two-month process." I can't see where, you know, myself or Shane or the council would not allow them the time to fix up their home. I mean, I really hate the idea of the city coming in and tearing down somebody's home. But on the other hand, we can't keep maintaining snow fence around properties that have missing basement walls all winter long.
So, the resolution would be that from when we pass that resolution in 30 days, we would tear it down if we had not heard from them?
It would be identical to the resolution you passed on 157 Third Street last week. Identical, just probably some less verbiage because there was less contact.
I guess I'm fine with passing that if we need...would it just be a motion today and then Matt, we have to type up, write up the resolution for us to pass?
He'd be requesting us to, yeah, to draft a resolution for each of the eight residents.
I don't know if we actually did that for the 157 though, did we? They were just supplied to the council at that meeting? There was no motion asking for the resolution?
It was, um, it was approved, wasn't it?
The resolution was...
The resolution was approved, but there was no, there was no motion brought to you. It would just be myself or Chris or Shane supplying you with the resolutions like we did last time.
Well, then what are you looking for for today?
I'm looking forward come Thursday. Do you want us to start preparing? Actually, packet goes out Thursday, right? So, Wednesday, if we have not heard from these people, do you want resolutions in your packets to review?
I guess my opinion is yes, because we have set the precedence.
And like you said, we don't want to be sitting in December trying to maintain a snow fence around a building that has no basement wall.
Unfortunately, these houses are in residential neighborhoods that are occupied by, you know, lots of children, and to have somebody go down a sled hill or down, you know, keep pulling around on a sled and slide down in the basement because the snow dressed over the fence is not a liability that we want either. And again, I don't want to tear down anybody's home.
Right.
Just for clarification, I think we'd need to make a motion to go ahead with that. So, that way we're all on board with it.
Yep, and it's all...
There's no repercussions coming back to any department head over it, so I would make it as a motion that if you haven't heard anything, prepare the resolutions in time for next council meeting.
And again, that does not state that we're tearing their home down. It just states that if we don't hear something from them in 30 days, we are going to be forced to.
Correct.
Second.
First and second, any discussion?
One thing, and that they'll, just so it gets included, the vacant homes, there's one up there on Morgan Street that comes to mind, you know, a couple others in town that have, nobody's been, have they been inspected and part of this process?
All vacant structures, all vacant residential structures have been inspected, other than ones that had realtor signs in them. The thought process there was the, most of the realtor firms were contacted, actually they all should have been contacted, asking them to let us know if there was any damage to the, to the structure. All vacant buildings had an exterior inspection. If there was anything deeming need for an interior, we made entry and did an interior inspection.
That answers my question.
Okay, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Next?
Yeah.
For chance.
No, it's all the same department. Just kind of a recap on, and maybe up to speed on where we're at with the equipment. Originally, we had discussed having this discussion at the next council meeting after we met with the insurance agent. He's supposed to be here Wednesday to finalize all this. Just kind of want to bring you guys up to speed because if he does come in and total the vehicles that he's alluding, he's going to total out, we will have half of our fleet being towed away from the fire hall by the end of the week. Three pickups and one pump truck will be leaving. Even if they don't leave, once he's been here, they will 100% be out of service. We will no longer be able to utilize them, not even just for hauling stuff. With that in mind, we have put, got estimates on replacing all the vehicles. We have supplied them estimates all to the insurance company. Obviously, the pickups do not have replacement cost, just because they are a lower ticket item. And then we obviously talked about the one truck we've replaced. So, starting at the top with the truck you've already approved to be purchased, you approved that international chassis to be purchased for a pump truck to replace the 91 pumper that was on the capital improvements for next year. We actually were down today to Lyon, South Dakota, to sit down with them to lock together the body and pump portion of the truck and came together with all the pricing. When we priced the truck a year ago, it was approximately $350,000, which was the budget number I gave you guys at the council meeting. With the tariffs right now and with the change in chassis, because the chassis we had priced back then was different than the chassis that they were able to get us from another dealer that they had, so that we could get this truck going before next June, because if we wait for the Freightliner chassis, it'll be approximately June before it comes in. They were able to find an international chassis. The problem with that chassis is it's about $12,000 more. Then with some of the tariff stuff, the price, the price that they estimate, that they quoted today was $375,000, not $350,000. Now, keep in mind, they're supposed to be firming that number up hopefully by Monday for us, and then we still have the Sourcewell discount, the corporate buying discount that the city's a part of. So, I'm really hoping in making some changes to the truck that we did to the body to try to offset the costs. We did eliminate some things and reduce our thoughts on a few items. I'm hoping we can try to get that thing around the 360, 365,000. So, we'll be within about 15,000 of what we said. Any questions on that truck? That one's already been approved. Just kind of bringing you up to speed on that.
No questions, but I wouldn't want you to short yourself of any of that stuff.
Big-ticket items were actually, you know, we got rid of, it was like, because we were over $380,000 when we were pricing it out today. We pulled off the Class A foam induction system on the pump, which was only on the high-pressure side of the pump, which would be out of the turret gun or out of the booster reel. I can count on one hand the number of times I've used Class A foam for $8,000. We have them booster packs we can connect to it for Class A foam, and of the five times we did it, we were using such mass quantities that we used a $400 inductor that sits in the pail that's hooked directly in the lines versus having somebody stand up on the top of the truck pouring it in to the seven-gallon container that's up there. So, I mean, it was things like that that weren't real major. The one benefit, we did have a electronic over hydraulic arm that was going to raise the drop tank up to the top of the truck and then be able to bring it down as we needed it. We looked today to change that to actually slide it in the back of the truck. Less chance of people getting injured lifting it off the arm, but that was also another $6,000 option. Not really the end of the world. We did not sacrifice anything like number of air pack seats or discharges or, you know, quantity of hose or anything like that. Any other thoughts on that truck? Two of the pickups that we have are two-door grass rigs that it appears are both going to be totaled. The replacement costs that they budgeted for them were $58,994. And actually, I'm going to jump, the one crew cab we have, they budgeted at $62,294. We have discussed of only replacing two of them back to the plan of, you know, the original plan with the three-for-two fire trucks. So, we actually would only be replacing two of them trucks, and they would just be two-door trucks, so it'd be two trucks at the $58,994. That is us buying chassis locally and having them delivered to the dealer in Sioux Falls to have the flatbeds put on them and then re-putting our skid units, which have the tanks and the pumps on them. They would actually install the skid units and make the trucks all NPA compliant with lights, sirens. They'll do the council, all the wiring, and install the flatbeds. This is something that obviously we'll be getting some money from the insurance. This is something that I'm also looking to get a blessing from you. Obviously, if I let the dealer know in the morning, we can try to have the chassis there as early as the end of the week, early next week. We're looking at probably the second week in September, we'd take possession of them. So, we'd really only go three weeks without any grass rigs in our fire station. Again...
That's unheard of. So, I mean, to be able, basically, if the insurance totals at three trucks, we're going to be without grass rigs, because we, they're not going to be OSHA compliant to put our employees into the trucks. To jump through all this, he spent hours and hours to try and set this up. There is not a cheaper option for finding grass rigs right now. In fact, I don't think you could trim the fat anywhere on it, so...
Do we have a good option to get those two chassis by the end of the week?
I was told tonight that he would have them by the end of the week, have them delivered by the end of the week, beginning of next week, to the dealer in Sioux Falls.
And that's using a local source, which is nice.
They're coming from Solmons.
Beautiful.
You said we'd have them actually for in service approximately when?
Approximately the week after Boxcar Days, maybe into the following.
September 15th, roughly.
Again, this dealership has said with the situation, as soon as we have a confirmation on the chassis, they will start building the flatbeds. We can get them the skid units, beans they're going to be installing the skid units. Both of the skid units have some minor issues as they're 10 years old already. While they're in the factory, we're going to have them, we actually put a, I think it was an $1,800 refurbish is how we labeled it, that's built into that $58,000. There was an $1,800 refurbish for them to go through the pump, them to go through all the valves and everything on it and just replace whatever is bad. It might be $2,000, it might only be $1,000, just depending upon when they get them down there and go through them. So, we are reusing the pumps and the tanks. We're just putting a new chassis and obviously new lighting and stuff on it to be compliant. And actually, these trucks will come safer. The flatbeds that go on them will actually have a spot where firemen can sit versus now we sit on top of the skid unit with our feet on the side of the box rails when we're fighting grass fires, so...
So, good.
Do we need a motion or anything on anything going forward there?
You know, in theory, we're going to be getting some insurance money for it. Hopefully, in the end, if public assistance comes around, that some of the gap financing will help with some of this. But it is ultimately a city purchase that if the gap financing doesn't come around, the only guarantee we have right now is the insurance funding. With everything that's damaged at the fire hall right now, we can cover with what's in our capital improvements budget or transfers out budget. We can cover pretty much everything except the new truck, which originally we had discussed doing a financing option for five years with it if need be. And we do qualify for a whole lot of different financing options for that truck, and we have till January to figure out the financing options on that truck. So, I would say probably would need a motion to give me permission to purchase them two grass rigs.
I'd make the motion for you guys to purchase the grass rigs.
All second. First and second, any discussion?
Do you want the dollar amount in there?
For the $58,994? Is that the number we want in there? Okay, add that to it.
All of us in favor? Did you have anything else?
Nope, not on that, sorry.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
To recap on the original motion that was made a month ago, about three weeks ago probably, on replacing the pump trucks, the two pump trucks and that grass rig with another pump truck and a mini pumper, obviously, we've already approved that we could make them two purchases. At this point in time, there is not a chassis available for that mini pumper. We are first on the waiting list when they start getting chassis produced. I'm guessing that purchase won't be until probably around the beginning of the year, which hopefully by then we have some of this other stuff figured out, so we know where we're at financially. But I think with this motion here, that'll cover all four trucks that are to be replaced. So, does anybody have any questions on any of the trucks?
I would say, do you want a motion to allow the increase? You approved it for 350, and it could be up to 375 for the other one.
Honestly, my approach to that is they're supposed to get it to me on Monday.
Hard numbers on Monday.
I could bring you the hard numbers to the next council meeting, beans that our council meetings have been weekly right now. If it comes in at $375,004, I'd, you know what I'm saying?
Table it for Monday?
Yeah, we'll table it until Monday. And you said four trucks. I thought we had three. What's the other fourth one?
The fourth one ended up when they totaled out all the grass rigs. Originally, we were taking...
The two that you just did, right?
Originally, we were taking a grass rig and the pumper that were being totaled, and we were going to replace the other pumper to get two trucks.
Yeah.
Okay? That was the original motion that was passed three weeks ago. So, there, then when they totaled out the other two pickups, now we have zero pickups. At the time we did that, we were only aware of the one pickup and the one pump truck being replaced. The original capital improvements had showed the change-up of those three trucks, so we went ahead and moved forward with replacing those three trucks for two. Then we came back with more repairs and the insurance companies leaning heavily towards, from what they've told us, that they're totaling the rest of them.
They told us, "Go ahead and order the trucks." So...
So, the other two trucks you approved tonight were the actual two pickups that were to be in the fire hall. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
As far as all the other equipment for the fire department, I think we're sitting pretty good on that with the insurance company.
We haven't had anything turned down yet. So, boots, radios, we're going to discuss on Wednesday. We have, a lot of the radios were water damaged, so, but he'll be here on Wednesday. We've had a Motorola technician look through them.
So, that is about all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we do the request for long-term recovery.
So, we have a long-term recovery team, or a long-term recovery group set up. It's not very common yet, but it's highly recommended from FEMA for all smaller communities and areas to have them set up. It's a reaction to the flood. A long-term recovery is, helps organize the volunteer organizations that come to town later on. We will eventually, as the potential for public assistance comes in, or I'm sorry, individual assistance, they'll set up case managers, and as funds come in from various sources and donations and such, it's not, it's not ethical for a city to distribute those funds, because, you know, you, it's not ethical for the city to establish a group or a board or something like that. You have to set up this nonprofit organization. So, it's a long-term recovery team is what it's called. They've applied, they've got 501(c) status with IRS, they're ready to go. The problem is, is they've set up a checking account, and they've stuck some funds into it, and it's their own money. I told them that I'd approached the council for, they've got just under $1,000. It'd be nice if the city could cover the expense for the $1,000 for the startup of the long-term recovery fund that benefits the city as a whole.
Who is this long-term recovery fund?
Right now, we've got four members of it. There are a couple members of the community, Pam Anderson, I don't have the exact list in front of me, but Jamie Johnson, I think there's five on there right now. And then myself and Chief Lickde are also the advisors to it. It's, again, because there's money to be, there's bylaws and stuff that they're going by, it's sponsored by HESAM, the Homeland Security Emergency Management from the state. They're given, they give the guidelines for it. But it needs to be a private, non-for-profit, so that there's no liability that falls back on the city, like, hey, you gave them a washer and dryer, but you didn't give me one, you know, that kind of a thing. So, that's why it's got to be this separate organization. Does that make sense?
So, we more or less are going to fund it to help get it started?
The start of it.
But then there won't be any more expense, because they'll be their own fiable, and we're not responsible for it. If somebody steals money or anything, it is not our...
Exactly. It relieves us of any obligation or liability of it at all. And that's what we really have to do as a city, is we have to stay safe from that, because if they, if they get a volunteer organization in and they go into somebody's basement and they cause damage or something like that, and they're not vetted or insured or anything like that, we have to stay out of that. And right now, we've been operating through the Red Cross on some of that stuff, some of the church groups and things like that. But as they pull stakes, then we won't have that, that liability coverage, so to speak, from their organizations.
So, do individuals then, like, once Red Cross and all that kind of goes away, does this group kind of take over some of that stuff?
Yeah, so what'll happen is Lutheran Social Services is one of the stronger groups in this. They'll actually send teams of, oh, what's the word I'm looking for? Not auditors, counselors, you know, to come in and do the vetting of it. They'll actually come and sit down with people and see what their unmet needs are. That's the terminology moving forward, is the unmet, unmet needs. And they'll, case managers, that's what it is. So, they'll actually hire a local person and train them to be a case manager, is more than likely what will happen moving forward. And it could be multiple people. Those case managers then will go into, as individuals request help or assistance through the FEMA process, through SBA process, things like that, moving forward, those case managers will, will identify the unmet needs. So, in the event that public assistance comes in, or individual assistance... So in the event that public assistance comes in, or individual assistance, and a person is given, and this is not promise, this is just an example, say they were given $5,000, but they have $15,000 or $20,000 worth of damage, that case manager will say, okay, how do I help them meet this need? And the case managers will help prioritize who needs the help the most, because they might not have enough money to help everyone, or they might have excess money at the end. You never know. It's, it's all in how the, how the funding works out. This is also not just a temporary thing for the, just the flood. This is a thing moving forward, as they have maybe fundraisers or ways that they get money, they may come forward and request money from the city in the, in, you know, in the future. So I don't want you telling me, hey, you said this is a one-time thing. Because what they can do is they can respond immediately to people. It doesn't have to just be for a flood. Long-term recovery team can be, if somebody has a house fire, they could respond immediately and go help them with certain things in a house fire. You know, the Red Cross and other organizations are really good about getting here and helping them, but they only have certain things that they can, that they can fall into. And as a team like that, they have bylaws, and they have to vote, like anything else, on what to do with the money, but their vote is, that's it. That's law, that's not, no one can come and judge them afterwards. So that's where we relieve our liability of things like that, so.
And this is suggested by FEMA, or?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, this is FEMA, Homeland Security Emergency Management, they've all, this long-term recovery teams are all highly, highly being pushed to be built right now. And in, in my education previous to this, we, we talked about them a lot. They're, you know, we set ours up in retrospect, or, you know, afterwards, in, you know, response to the disaster, but it would have been nice to have it set up before the disaster. And hindsight's 2020, now we can move forward and, and have this set up. It's already set up. It's already done. The problem is, they've spent just under $1,000. So I'd like to request that the city give them $1,000 for startup, and then they can move forward from there, so they don't have their own personal money. Keep in mind, three of the people on this committee had water in their basement too. So.
And you said there's bylaws and everything, so there's checks and balances.
I did.
Because people, even though it's not our team, people are still going to come to the city and expect that it's part of the city. So I just want to make sure, even though we're not liable, they have their own bylaws.
Yep, it's the Tracy Long-Term Recovery Team, and.
No, I think it's a great resource.
We could use the funding that we got, that immediate, that loan money we got, the 250,000, take it out of there to give to them.
Absolutely, yeah.
It doesn't vary anything with the budget or anything like that, so.
No, $1,000 is what they have into it so far. If you want to do more, you can. If you want to do less, you can, but if you want to do a thousand, whatever the council thinks.
I guess right now, I say let's do the thousand, and they can come and do an official proposal to us if they want more money. And that way, they can educate us, they can educate people that are watching.
Yeah.
But I think let's, let's cover their startup costs right now.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
First and second, any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries.
On their behalf, thank you.
Anything else?
Anybody have anything else?
Motion adjourned.
Second. Do you need any discussion? Motion carries.
Aye.